Committee of the whole to order. Port Taylor, please call the roll.
Polanski.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Tulludo.
I'm here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Present.
Beremis.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn. Absent. Uh, Hill.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent?
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Item two, public comments. Is there anyone signed in for a public comment?
I'm aware of no.
All right. And is there anyone in the audience that wants to make public comment this evening? All right. Item three A, review of the fiscal year 2023 budget. City manager, would you like to make some opening comments?
I have no opening comments. I was just going to turn it over to the assistant city manager.
Are we going right into item B on page two dash thirty-one, planning, zoning and economic development?
Yes, sir.
Assistant city manager, Cop, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Starting out with the planning, zoning and economic development. The planning and zoning department provides assistance to the zoning planning commission and the D P Z, Development Planning and Zoning Committee regarding applications for zoning relief, conditional uses, variations, map amendments, tax amendments, whatever it would be. And they also work on the amendments to the comprehensive plan, which will, we've done some of those separate planning in the past. In 2022, planning and zoning division processed twenty-three cases for those types of variations or conditional uses, plan developments. And they also have worked with the Public Arts Commission this year to do the first mural for their new mural program and assist with implementation of sustainability plan. Look at line item thirty fifty-two, which includes the completion of our comprehensive review and update of the current zoning ordinance. That was actually last time updated was nineteen ninety-two as well as sub area, some sub area, sub area planning and the updating of the subdivision ordinance. The zoning ordinance was updated, was, the update was restarted in 2021. We paused it when the pandemic first started, not knowing what the financial impacts of that was going to be. And we got it started again last year. We're hoping to have it completed in 2023. The Almer's subdivision ordinance, which is a companion document to the zoning ordinance, the last time that was comprehensively redone was nineteen ninety-three. Like I stated before, the rewrite of zoning ordinance from nineteen ninety-two, the world has changed in many ways since that time. In nineteen ninety-two, there were no doggy daycares and there were still video stores. And I believe you can still have a habidashery in the downtown if you choose so. The useless zoning warrants are incredibly lengthy and outdated. Many uses could be consolidated and better defined. Zoning ordinance also is not intuitive or I would say user friendly. There's a lot of gotchas in it if you're not sure where you're looking at it. So we're looking to update the ordinance to incorporate the modern best practices and make the ordinance as user friendly for city staff, property owners and the developers. I also want to draw attention to line item sixty forty-five. That's our public information programming net really geared more towards economic development side. Our business development manager, Heather Barrakis, is the one that monitors that, that line item. And that's where we have the commercial estate broker event. This year, we want to reinstate the, we had a Makers and Shakers entrepreneurial series where we started right before the pandemic and pandemic hit. So we quit doing it, want to get that back on track also. And to, and with that series too, to get more of an educational piece to it too. And, you know, bring more interest and entrepreneurship to the city of Elmhurst. That also includes the marketing program such as you'll see just one up today, the dashing through Elmhurst and you'll see some reindeers in different locations. And if you in those shopping locations, take a picture of your receipt and send it in, you can win a great Elmhurst prize. So I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cop. Discussion, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. Mr. Cop, so for 2022, it looks like we're, we're well under budget. Was there some attrition this year in this department?
In the, in the wages?
I'm sorry, yeah, on ten zero one.
Yeah.
So Alderman, that's a spread of a number of different positions into that. So you really can't look at that and say it's one or two people. It's portions of other employees' salaries in that as well. So there could have been in other positions. We had a gap where Erin had left and Heather came in. And so that, that could account for a portion of that.
The assistant planner was new as well last year?
Correct. Jessica was new as well.
Yeah. So I, I figured that was the case. So maybe I'm, I've misread this, but wages full time? I mean, so that's not representative of, you know, heads?
It is, but it's numerous heads. So like a portion of my salary could be taken out of this, a portion of other, a portion of.
I got it. Thank you. Sorry. Thanks.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the top short-term routine goals in the strategic plan that was presented at our last council meeting was to update the city's downtown master plan. Do we anticipate any of that work next year? And if so, is there any funding for it?
We did, we did put $50,000 in there for sub area planning and that would be at one of our sub areas. So yes, that could be used for that.
Thanks.
For discussion on planning, zoning and economic development or economic development? All right. We will move forward. Next on the agenda, item C, buildings, page two dash three eight. Mr. Cop?
Sure. Through October thirty-first of this year, the community development department, which includes the building department, fire prevention and code enforcement, has issued just under four thousand permits with a total construction value of over $202 million. Our building inspectors have performed over ninety-seven hundred construction-related inspections and code enforcement has performed around twenty-three hundred inspections and managed over seventy hundred code violations. And glad to say that over half of them being proactively generated by our code enforcement officers. The rest were complaint driven and the majority of those were through our Elmer's connect app. So we're glad to see that people are actually using that app. Year to date, we have issued seventy-seven new home permits. We also have two waiting to get picked up and ten that are in plan review right now. This year, last year at this time, we had seventy-eight new homes issued at this time last year with a total of ninety-four for the year last year. So we're about right on track with what we were last year. We're not seeing any slowdown in the, in the development side of it. We are currently in the process of updating our building code and are targeting getting it to the D P Z agenda, hopefully before the end of the year. Again, we continue to address the stormwater issues. I know that the community development facilitates the check valve program and the overhead sewer program. We're seeing that still being used, not to the levels that it was in the past. So hopefully all the work we've been doing with all the stormwater showing that there's not as great a need for it as there was in the past. We, we expect to see some similar brisk construction activity, not only residential, but also commercial properties in 2023. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Discussion. Alderman Park.
Thank you. Hi. Just for my sake, is there a breakdown of which wards, the new houses are in of the seventy-something for the last couple of years? I'd just like to know for my own personal.
I can get that. I don't.
I don't expect it now.
Can we get that? Sure.
Oh, or it doesn't even have to be on a circle back as they're a lower level, like just text me tomorrow. I have a feeling a lot of them are in Ward five, so I just am curious.
I'll ask a question if I may. How were, Mr. Cop, we've had problems in the past getting up to full strength on our inspectors. Are we meeting the demand for inspections with the current staff we have?
Yes, we are. In fact, last year, in fact, under contract staffing, you'll show that we, we did reduce it quite a bit. On thirty ninety-two, we had extra money in there in case we needed to do more inspectors during the busy season. And this last year, we did not need that. And now with our complement of code enforcement offers and building inspectors, we have a couple of part-time people to help us when we get in high demand. It's, it's worked well.
They've been doing a very good job, I will say from personal experience.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this one?
I'll ask one more question.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't remember exactly when we did it, but we put some new practices in place related to commercial development and kind of requiring a review of the site management. Can you just talk a little bit about if we've seen some projects come through and how that's working? Is it more labor intensive or are we finding some savings in the code enforcement side after the fact? Just want to hear a little bit about that process.
Um, I, probably the biggest project that's come forward since that time was the Ryan's project over there at the Vine on Haven. And it, it was very helpful in the process. It was a lot of work for both our code enforcement and our engineering department. They're the ones that really worked through the whole program with the Ryan companies when they came in. But I think it helps set expectations. And one of the things was with the parking, we've had a couple issues with the parking, but by going back to the Ryan after the fact and go, hey, this is what you guys agreed to, you were going to do. And we were able to work together with them to define solutions to where they had the problems too. But I think, I think it was a good change. I think it's nothing else that set expectations for everybody right off the bat to say, here's what we expect of you. And, and they agreed to it. So if there was never an issue, it's like, hey, this is what we all decided we were going to do. And I think, I think it's been helpful.
Good, good to hear. Thanks.
Anything else on buildings? We will move then to cable television, page two dash seven three. Are you the producer?
So, yeah, the cable TV, that's, that's what we're videoing right now. This city council chambers, the committee of the whole meetings, but it's also our Elmer's TV. And this is probably one of our most visible communication channels. We're constantly trying to create new content, content for the Elmer's TV. It also includes what you'll see on channel six on Comcast, on channel ninety-nine and A T T Universe. You know, the focus is really to create entertaining and educational videos that can be shared online. Our communications manager oversees, we use contract staffing to do a lot of our videoing and the communication manager oversees and manages the budget to ensure that it's being used appropriately. And any questions?
Alderman Brennan.
So professional services on line thirty fifty-two. It's at a hundred K this year, drops to sixty and then back up to a hundred K. What's sort of causes that pattern?
Balancing the budget. So really, there, there are a couple of items in here. We'll see one later on a community grant program. It's the same thing. We try to look and see where, where, where we could afford to maybe cut some money out of the budget to help balance the budget this year. Speaking with our communications manager, we think we can manage that at that, at that amount as we, as we have in the past. If you look back at the history of it too, you know, during the COVID, we've managed it very tightly and we tried, and it works. So we're going to hopefully do the same thing again next year.
Thank you. See, can you, I was looking at the same line. I, I see it's been fifty, sixty. I see it was higher this year, but is there something anticipated in 2024 that would suggest a budget amount going back from sixty to a hundred?
You know, it depends on the programming because, you know, the estimate for a hundred thousand this year, you know, what we, we're probably going to end up carrying some of that money over. So we didn't get the, we didn't get the time to get it done. One of the things was the rebranding of Elmer, of the explore Elmer, so we'll talk a little bit more. We, we were going to do some heavy marketing, some video, actually some professional videos and stuff like that to help us through that. And so we're probably going to, we didn't get that done this year. So someone's going to be carried over to sort of balance it off, probably about $20,000 is going to be carried over to help some of the things that we couldn't get done this year into next year. And, and we'll look at, I mean, 2024, it's really what's going on at the time more than anything.
All right. Other discussion? All right, we'll move on to visitor and tourism, page two seven four.
All right. Really some of the highlights on visitor and tourism is, is this year is really our websites. And, and I know we just approved those through finance not too long ago. So we're going to redoing the website for the city of Elmhurst, the Elmer's History Museum and Explore Elmhurst. And so we're looking for the city website to come online, maybe the mid to late spring. The museum, late spring, and then the explore Elmhurst, probably not till the fall. But that, just to highlight for the Elmer's city website, even though the websites are under I T budget, it's really a big part of what visitor and tourism does or they're important part of it. But the new city website, I think the one thing that everybody's looking forward to is a new and improved search engine optimization for the new website. I think that's one of the biggest concerns people have is the search and the search capabilities of our website right now. So it's going to come out with a new design, better search capability, even ability for us to prioritize searches if, if we choose to do so. Then again, for the, the explore Elmhurst, our communication department is very excited about the new design and new features. And in fact, our communication manager want to let me know that the new explore Elmhurst website is going to knock your socks off, so.
Wow.
Probably should have had Dave Olberg say that.
So really in 2023, the biggest visitor tour is going to be the refresh of the explore Elmhurst campaign with the new look, the new website, a new visitors guide, updated promotional videos and new exciting community events, activities, displays, which is going to be like a jumpstart to the development of a new robust CRM, a customer relationship management system that will connect all the content on exploreelmhurst.com. We're also in 2023, we just started in 2022. We're keeping it going in 2023 is the expansion of the explore Elmer's advisory group, which is made up of all the different organizations throughout Elmhurst, just the hotels, it's the park district, the school district. And we're going to try to start expanding that and adding value to it through training at the events. Used to just be a, a meeting that everybody would come to. Now we're at least on a quarterly basis, they're going to have some kind of training element to it to help everybody. It's most of the public information officer from these organizations are the marketing person. So I'm trying to make that also part of it. Line item thirty ninety-eight, that's the explore Elmer's trolley, which is, you know, it's, it's iconic service in Elmhurst that's been tracked and potential customers. It's been, it's really become something that people really look forward to. There's a slight increase in the budget and that's because it just costs the operational cost. And we're, we're looking at putting in a digital ridership counter on the trolley also, which right now we ask the driver to do it, but with all the other things the driver's doing, like driving, and sometimes the numbers are difficult. But we did, based on the numbers we have, record setting last year was really a popular as always is. So hopefully continue that program. I talked about a little bit earlier, sixty, sixty forty-five, is that, no, sixty thirty-two community grants. We did, we did lower that by $40,000 and we'll just, the explore Elmer's grant committee will have to just work with the dollars we have. Um, I, I think like on the revenue side, that's always paid for the hotel motel taxes pay for that. I think the revenue side, we're starting to get back closer to what we were prior to the pandemic. We're still not there though. See what else got here? The Public Arts Commission, sixty ninety. As you see, it's mentioned in the J form, this line item has been increased to assist the Public Arts Commission in meeting their mission. The J form mentioned one possibility, the chair and our, and our, of the commission and our communication manager discussed. And ultimately, it will be up to the Public Arts Commission to decide what it is they use. But there was some discussion in J form about possibly like a, like a, I want to think a traveling arts where like in someplace in Elmhurst, they were talking about maybe that green space by the library where it would be rotating. So an attraction tourism, bringing people back to town. But it'd be up to, it'll be up to the Public Arts Commission. Oh, yeah. And that, that $30,000 was funded through the, the Ryan company's purchase of the parking lot over there on Haven too. That was the agreement, that $30,000 that would go to the Public Arts Commission for a public art. And any questions?
Discussion, Alderman Tulludo.
Thank you. Thank you for that detail because I was going to ask about the Public Arts Commission amount of money, where that was coming from. As it relates to the French market.
Oh, yeah. I was going to mention that. Darn it. Go ahead.
From prior understanding, there is a desire among some folks to, to try out a French market. And I, you know, I'm not sure if that's really the core mission of the city. Has there been or is there any information available in terms of estimation of increased traffic, increased revenue that would offset the $10,000 investment? How, what is that going to pay for? Like any detail? I know it's a small amount of money, but again, I really don't think it's like the core mission of the city of Elmhurst to put on a French market.
Yeah. So we're still, we're still working with the promoter of the, of the French market. A $10,000 would be help. And the initial year for setup cost, there are, if we can, if we set it up for a permanent basis, you'll see that on these other ones, they have like grommets they put in the parking lot, sort of tents are easy to set up for the, for the market. There's also, could be, the promoter rent spaces. There could be spaces that are allowed at no cost to the city of Elmhurst for Elmer's businesses in the city center. There's still a lot of options, all things that, that can be worked out. There is possibly a revenue stream also from the promoter to, to offset those costs. But we're still at the preliminary, really preliminary aspects of that, looking at, is it possible? First of all, we're trying to find a site. We think we did find a site that would work, that's not going to be disruptive to the downtown, but still in the downtown area where people can walk to. It's being proposed as a Sunday morning or mid morning, early afternoon type of market.
Follow up. What committee would this go through if this stays in the budget? Or is it because it's under the city manager's authority, it would just go through the city manager?
We would probably run through a public affairs and safety. Because part of it would be too, because it's going to be city property that it's going to be on, so there's got to be the city council's approval of using the city property, I would think.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, what percentage of this budget is funded through the hotel motel tax? Is just the grants or is it other items in there?
I think, I don't know. I think it's just the grants. Total revenue is $278,000. I know the community grants are funded to that, but we have, I think, way more qualifying expenses than we do on the, than we do a revenue. So.
Well, it's, yeah, as you said, about 278.
Three hundred seventy-eight, three hundred seventy-eight. What's we projecting for this year? Three seventy-eight.
Thank you. Other questions? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned a little bit, did we, did I hear you correctly? Did we track ridership on the trolley last year?
Yes.
Okay. And is that, you said we're going to get a digital counter, but it's the duty of the driver to track that?
Yeah, it is right now. And it did, I mean, our numbers were higher this year than they've ever been before this past year. So, and we're not, we're not sure we're getting them all counted either.
So do, do we carry data going back a few years on that, on ridership on that?
Yes.
I'd like to make that a circle back item, just to hear about that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on visitor tour and tourism? Alderman Jensen.
Back to the French market. You said that would be downtown somewhere? You know, isn't there already a business organization that's supposed to support businesses and things like that downtown in city center? Why would the city put more resources behind that as opposed to somewhere else in town, whether down on Spring or somewhere up north or wherever it is?
We, we've spoke, city center, we spoke to city center about it and their, their issue, their, I don't say their issue, but they're fine with us doing it. Let's put it that way. I mean, they're, so it's like the, the discussion comes is their core mission is for their businesses in the downtown, is bringing other businesses into the downtown part of their core mission. Where we feel that as part of the city of Elmhurst, bringing a French market to our downtown is something that's going to have vibrancy through our downtown, it's going to bring people to our downtown. So that's how we, that's.
Sort of like the trolley then?
The trolley.
Okay. I think last call on this one. All right, we're moving on to human resources, two dash two, page two dash twenty-seven.
My human resource department continues to support the city by developing, managing employee resources, including the staffing, recruitment, managing employee labor relations, performance management, training and development, compensation and benefits. They also staff the board of police and fire commissioners, which facilitates the hiring of police officers and firefighters. It also administers the I M R F benefits and all medical insurance benefits for all library employees. And this last year assisted with negotiating a successor agreement for the internal order of police. And we just be, they helped with the beginning of the negotiations for the I A F F, which expires yet to the end of this year. They also the initiation of the eligibility list for both the entry level of police officers, the latter police officers and the firefighters in conjunction with the B O F P C. I mentioned this just to recognize the extraordinary amount of time and effort our H R team as well as communications have put into these recruitments. Though the number of applicants continues to be significantly less than in the past, our numbers have greatly outperformed others in the public sector. Bringing this to sixty forty-two personal recruitment, you'll notice that line item is up significantly for a couple of reasons. One is we consolidated, like there was some personal recruitment and admin, some of our history museum that we consolidated over to this line item. But we just did increases because it's been a very challenging and competitive job market. And we're going out on some positions more than once, twice, sometimes three times they find viable, viable candidates. Also assisted with the creation of the new police sergeant list and started the process for the position of battalion chief and fire lieutenant. And this next year, you know, Tyler Muniz goes online with our financials January first. But there's also the enter gov, which is the community development portion of it. It's the licensing portion of it. There's also a human capital management portion of it. So this, everything's coming on over the next, probably like the next eighteen months. Now hopefully everything will be online. But so H R will be working now with the human capital management module for Tyler, Tyler E R P. And with the hope that we get a number of like disparate softwares all into one to just manage the whole human capital management aspects of the human resource. And we just began the compensation and classification study. So hopefully by early next year, we'll have that completed. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
City treasurer.
Thirty fifty-two. What, what's all making up the ninety-one K? You mentioned the compensation study. I believe that was originally in last year's.
Yeah. So that's like our citywide trainings in there. And as for our mandatory plus elective trainings, we just did the, the diversity, equity, inclusion training. We just about a month or so ago, we did our sexual harassment mandatory training. It's also the promotional process for lieutenant battalion chief in the fire department, which is, it's a, it's a big number to run through that process. And it's all based on collective bargaining in the contract. That's how it has to be ran. It's our employee assistance program is out of that. Like I said, the compensation study was out of for last year's. It's, that's, that's, that's some of the big numbers on our, the citywide training, performance management trainings in there. And there, there are so a few dollars in there too for strategic planning and, and the training that we don't, the strategic planning too. It's a, it's a lot of different things, but those were the main items.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I'm twenty oh nine, zero nine, tuition reimbursement. Could you just give a little background on that? I think this is the first time that's jumped out at me.
That's ran through H R department. And depending on your level in the organization, you can get up to either 2,500 or $5,000 in tuition reimbursement for education that you choose outside, a bachelor's degree, associate's degree, even some certification degrees that aren't required, but they are good for the city of Elmhurst for you to be better educated. And so it's, that's pretty much goes if you're, the exempt employees are at 5,000, non-exempt 2,500 per year.
And historically, has this been taken advantage of?
It ebbs and flows. Some years has more. If you see back in like twenty twenty-one, we had 25,000, a year prior, 12,000. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right. We will move on to information technology on page two dash two nine.
All right. I T department provides I T services for all the city departments and employees to serve the community the most effective way. the community the most effective way. Our main focus for the remainder of 2022 and 2023 will be the Tyler Munis ERP implementation and cybersecurity. As you're all aware, the cyber, cyber insurance industry has become very active, requiring specific security compliance controls to receive affordable or even to get insurance in for cybersecurity. We kicked off the know before training this year, and early this month we implemented the EDR on all our PCs and laptops as the endpoint detection response, which is an enhanced protection against virus, malware, and ransomware. Before the end of the year, IT will be migrating our on-premise Microsoft Exchange email system to an exchange online, which if you've maybe saw in the past in the, in the news how the on-prem has had some significant virus and malware attacks on it. Let's see. The remainder of 2023's focus for the IT department will be continuous enhancement of the city cybersecurity posture with a focus on implementing the 12 critical controls that our insurance underwriters are looking for when renewing our policies. Just moving off of the micro, the on-prem exchange and this EDR are two of those things. Some of our policies where we have almost all in effect right now, but working to enhance those all as we move forward. We're also going to be looking at the, examining the feasibility of incorporating the utility fiber network into overall city connectivity to look at reducing expenses that relates to our external data connectivity services. A few years ago, probably about five years ago now, we, we're having problems with bandwidth getting into the buildings. And so we, we contracted with Comcast Fiber and they put fiber to many of our locations. And it's, it's expensive. So is there a way to, to reduce that? So the public works and building committee will be familiar with anytime we've been doing a public works project for at least the last five or six years, we're bringing fiber to those locations for, for good, reliable communications. But they are running near some of our city facilities. And so we're going to look at how can we pick off some of our city facilities to add into that fiber. We currently have like fiber between here and the police station. So if we can get one of our public utility fiber lines to tie into either police station or, or city hall, that'll tie us in together. We have it in the station two right now, fire station two because of the stormwater facility down there. And so we're going to look at ways to be able to start bringing these into our own, our own fiber network, and then we're, we can drop our Comcast contract for the, for the fiber. We just talked about that one. Line item 5023, you see there's a substantial increase in that, and most of that through the overlap of our implementation for Tyler, because we're going to be running parallel systems, so we still got to pay the maintenance for the old Central Square AS400 at the same time at Tyler Munis. So hopefully as, as that Tyler comes online, we'll be able to drop off some maintenance on the AS400. Line item 8003, computer equipment. Our PCs are nearing end of life and we have them scheduled for replacement in 2023. And then as we, new computers come online, we're going to start switching over to Office 365 online. The other thing we're looking at now too is that there, due to the pandemic, we, many of us that did not have laptops in the past now have laptops. And so now we have a PC and a laptop. We're looking at going forward just to buy a laptop with a docking station, just have the monitors that keep, like you have right now, but we won't have two computers to manage or to purchase. So we're going to look at how we can do that most effectively. Lastly, just to make you aware of the IT budget, as you know, many of you know, that gets allocated to each department based on number of PCs in that department. And the detail on that's on page 934 if you're, if you're interested. Other than that, be glad to answer questions.
I bet you Alderman Brennan has a question.
I do. You answered most my question on 5023, the, the software maintenance. So with Tyler going live, is there a budget for post-live maintenance? I mean, are we getting some sort of service agreement with them?
Yes.
So that's included in that number?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. So the computer equipment, is that a phased replacement or is that just a pretty big change?
We usually, to try to keep everything consistent of what we're purchasing, we purchase it usually in a, in a bulk. So everybody's working off the same equipment. The only thing we don't is the laptops, we don't, you know, normally we bought them separately, but our PC replacement's always been a full replacement. Now, we're going to look at that actually this time. Part of it, you start losing like your warranty, end of life stuff, but we're, the thing that we're going to look at right now is that because we're going to Office 365, not everybody needs 365, but you still need some of the Office suite. And so our PCs they have right now have the license as part of the PC. That, that's, you can't do that anymore, basically. Everything's got to be like a software as a service now. So you pay an annual fee to have the Office 365 or the Office suite. So we're going to look at, is there opportunity to, some of our better PCs, I guess, to keep those operating where we don't need the Office 365. And so we can have, still have that Office suite, you know, the, the Word and Excel on those computers where it, it will work to do so. So we're not paying the, the fee for the 365.
I mean, I understand the benefits of the economy as a scale there, but you know, maybe spreading that cost out, I just didn't know if the savings is really there to justify replacing that many in one year? Or is that something, have we always done it in big, like, how often do we do that?
Every three to four years.
Okay. And the, the laptops, the, the cost difference, is it significant between the laptops and the PCs right now? What's, what's our rationale?
They're, they're pretty, I think they're fairly close right now exactly for what the type of laptop we pay, we purchased and the type of PC we purchased in the past.
And the rationale for that might be for remote work or?
That'd be, yeah, that'd be, exactly. So, I mean, when the, when the pandemic hit, there was able to work from wherever, basically with the VPN, to be able to VPN to, to the, our network. And to be able to continue, to be able to have that option. I mean, rather than buying two devices for everybody, just buying one, just seemed to make sense.
Without going too much in the rabbit hole, I know that, you know, within clients and all that, and I don't know how they, they can do that now where you don't have to buy a complete PC. You can have a lot of cost savings if you do that, but I think that's something I'll, these are independent, full function desktops.
Right. It's not going to be every, it's not going to be every position has a laptop and a docking station, right? It's going to be the ones that need a laptop, basically. Rather than having two devices, they'll just have one. But not, not every, not every PC will be replaced with a, a laptop and a docking station.
And those are on the same three to four year replacement schedule? Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Brennan.
So I'm on two, page 230. It's related to the tablets, what, the 114 tablets, what do we use tablets for?
The tablets are going to be for, really, they're go, they're going to go for the Tyler Munis for all the work that's done outside the building, basically. All our inspectors will have them. The idea is that all of the public works vehicles will have them at some point too. So they can close out tickets from their location, rather than coming back and telling their supervisor, hey, I, I did that. And then they go into computer and close it out. The idea is to take full advantage of what the Tyler Munis allows us to do. And that's one of the things, it's, like, right now, our inspectors don't have the tablets for inspections, on building, building inspections. They come, they, it all gets documented, comes back, and it's entered in a computer when they come back here. This way they'll be able to, right in the tablet, it comes back in, automatically syncs into Tyler, and all the information's there. Same thing with the court enforcement is using some tablets right now, but it's going to be, it's going to be to enhanced level. And we have that many in there to eventually grow to the whole public works also. I mean, right now, our wastewater treatment plant, they have like 20 tablets out there right now that they use, but those are not purchased, they're purchased through the MUF fund, whatever. But that's, that's the idea that where people will be using from anywhere, you don't have to be at your PC to be able to enter or access. Even our inspectors out, like our, our engineer that does our roadway projects, to be able to look at the specifications, to be able to access those from out in the field, rather than have to come back, look at the, look at whatever document it is and go back, you know, and, and reach out to the contractor. He can look at it right there and say, hey, this was the specification was, it should have, this curb should have been one inch higher or whatever it would be, I don't know, as an example.
Yep.
Alderman Brennan.
So, so along those same lines, I think that's great. You know, if we're investing in a, a new ERP system, it makes sense for us to take advantage of it. What you just described though, sounds like a lot of change, so hopefully, you know, there's appropriate training, change management in place.
I will tell you that everybody's excited for it.
Okay.
They really are. And it's been, I mean, our, our ERP right now is obviously antiquated, and the people see the benefits of this new one. We're doing the training with it already, even though like the enter gov's not going online probably till around the fall of this year. Our inspectors are already in the training with their iPads, accessing and seeing all the cool stuff it does, and they're, they're very impressed with it.
Awesome. Thank you. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Kamira. I'm thinking about, I think I'd like to circle back to see the per-unit cost on laptops and PCs and other comparables that maybe you looked at when you looked at those replacement costs. Just to see, just to get a sense of it, right? And I, I just wonder what other, oh, go ahead.
The only issue is we have not looked at them yet. So we're still trying to evaluate what kind of laptop we would use, what kind of PC we'd use. So we're trying to come up, we just had this discussion today, actually, our IT director and I, depending on what the need's going to be, right? So we're, we're trying to come up with a device that for the IT staff, so it's not 10 different types of laptops or 10 different types of PCs that we sort of, we standardize, we generalize it, but that it meets the demands of what it's going to be used for. We haven't done that yet, so I, I mean, I can, I don't know what comparables I'd be able to give you at this time, but.
So we're looking at a vision category, depending on what your level is in the organization, how you're delivering, especially the community. You obviously, obviously need a certain type of device to really best build those. Mike and I were talking about that today, how to build it based on the roles within the organization. Get the right tools in the right people's hands.
And we can take advantage of some of those Black Friday deals, you know?
This will go to finance committee too. This will go through the finance committee when it's finally come to an expenditure.
Alderman Talludo.
I was going to invite Alderman Hill to our finance committee meeting when this topic comes up, and maybe he can add some value to the discussion at that point in time.
Alderman Mulliner.
I have two questions. The first one is, do we have cameras embedded in this budget someplace so we can put cameras in the buildings?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it will be accomplished in 2023. We had it, was supposed to be, in 2022, we added them to the public works garage, updated the ones that were there. We had plans for city hall and fire station one, which are two locations that we have them right now. Our project manager and our IT director both moved on, and we just weren't able to get to the projects. But we are in the process, and in 2023 you will see them.
Okay.
Guarantee you that.
Second question. I'm glad to see that what we originally planned in 1990, which was to build a fiber network throughout the city, is finally coming through. But what I want to do is make sure that as we're doing that, have we had communications with the school district and park district? Because we're running fiber close to those facilities, we ought to think about hooking them in as well.
Yeah, we, we will, and we are. In fact, the one is that we just, same thing we talked about, there's actually a fiber node, because we have that pumping station where we put the, the new field in, in front of York High School. And we do have a paid fiber line going into high school right now because of our resource officers to have that connectivity. And so we're looking at ways to get it from that location into the school, so we no longer have to pay the fee for the Comcast fiber going into the school.
I'm afraid they're going to cut the TV off here if you keep talking about getting rid of Comcast, but all right. Other questions? City Treasurer.
1001, mentioned some staffing items this past year. I'm assuming that's what's going on with the projection. Curious though, and maybe this is not relevant, but the 510 last year budget seemed awfully odd, and back up to 687, which directionally is in line with 2021. Perhaps there's nothing here, but.
Yeah, there's, there, there are a couple of positions that historically weren't filled. And so last year, we never, the systems analyst position hasn't been filled for a couple of years. The IT project manager, we just filled for a short period of time last year. And so we have those positions open. We also have an IT tech position open right now. We're going to give our IT director some time to get his feet on the ground and make recommendations on what he feels is the best staffing model, yes, staffing model for the IT department.
Thanks.
My question is, is part of this rollout to the 365, are we going on the teams? Did I hear that? Is that going to be for all of the staff in city hall?
It's not going to replace Zoom per se, but it will be an optional license that we'll enable.
And will our phone system run through teams then?
We're going to look at the cost. I've talked to some colleagues from other communities. The teams-based phone licensing is a little expensive potentially. We'll have to look at the overall cost, there's some other alternatives as well.
All right. Anyone else? We will then move to inter fund transfers, two dash seven six.
Mayor, before we move there, I just want to touch on something that Mike brought up that over the last year, we had a rather sudden and tumultuous turnover in the IT department. And I really want to say thank you to, I'm super happy to have Larry here, of course, but the gentleman who remained in that department just really stepped up and did a great job in, in those absence. So I just want to recognize them and thank you for your support. And then we're going to turn over the remainder of the funds to our finance director.
All right. So on two dash 76 is the inner fund transfers. And we did cover these, the last budget meeting when we were talking about the funds that they are going to, but I will, I will highlight them, and certainly if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So the transfer to the stormwater fund is made up of three different components. The first is a $500,000 annual transfer that the general fund has been making to the, the stormwater fund. The next is the $1.3 million that has been being transferred from the general fund that began last year to again, support the debt service in the stormwater fund, and that we are continuing to look at the stormwater fee, and we'll provide a report back to council on that. The next part of the stormwater transfer, 2.95 million, is a transfer of ARPA dollars from the general fund to the stormwater fund to fund the pumping stations. So that covers the stormwater fund. For the parking fund, $200,000 is a transfer of ARPA funds to fund repairs to be made at the Larch deck. And the remainder, as we talked about the last meeting, is really to balance the parking fund and to make it whole, because that'd be due to COVID-19, the revenues have not yet caught up to the pre-pandemic levels.
Questions on inner fund transfer? One of the most exciting topics to cover. All right. Important though, to understand. We're going to go on to item I, TIF funds, page five dash one.
So the TIF funds, I'm going to briefly cover. There are two remaining TIFs, TIF one and TIF three. We anticipate to be fully spent down in 2022, so you'll notice for those two TIF funds, there is no budget for 2023. So really, the next TIF fund with a budget is TIF four. And if you want to look at the expenses on that, they are on page five dash 15. So we'll give everybody a second to get to that page. All right. So the notable items on page five dash 15, 60-18, the developer incentive, the majority of that is a payment that we make to the school district as part of the, the TIF laws, where we have to reimburse the school district for net new students in the TIF district. And that was $105,000 in 2022. Moving down to the capital outlay projects that are included also as part of the KEB, 3.5 million in 80-15 is the North York roadway improvements. That is improving North York from Crestview to Grand. There is a federal grant for this project, so of the 3.52 million, 2.816 million is covered by a federal grant that we've received through the DMMC's STP program. Moving down to the other public improvements, which is 80-26, those include two projects. One is the North Industrial Force Main Project, which is $250,000. And then the North York sidewalks improvements, which is just the beginning engineering for that project, it's $32,800. Otherwise, the majority of the expenses in, in this TIF are just routine expenses for the TIF district.
Could you say, what was the North Industrial?
North Industrial Force Main.
And how much was that?
$250,000. That's on KEB page 111. And the North York sidewalk is on KEB 110.
That's a good explanation. Any questions? Alderman Talludo.
Can't let her off that easy.
Oh, there's more.
What, just really quick, what is our current balance on our line of credit?
So the current balance is 6.85 million. So the budget that we have before us does take a drawdown on that to the max of $10 million. So there's draws in each of the TIF funds.
I thought this was, I thought this page was showing on like 9085 that we're going to pay into it to the tune of a million next year.
So yes, that does pay down some of the line of credit for the, the North York TIF fund, it does pay back into the line of credit, but there are other TIF funds that are drawing on that line of credit as well. So, so the, the total balance at the end of '23 is anticipated to be the full 10, drawn the full 10 million.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, continuing.
City Treasurer, sorry, I had a question.
City Treasurer.
With respect to the interest connected to that, seems like, is this variable, what's up with the increase?
So, it would be two factors that are increasing the interest. The first is there is a variable interest rate that we do pay, that's tied to the new SOFR interest rate, and then the other part is obviously increasing the balance that we're drawing down. If we're moving from 6.85 million to the $10 million, you're going to kind of have interest costs be increased for both, both factors.
And do you have to allocate that between the funds, like, if you're not drawing down specifically for TIF, this one?
So we do allocate it based on the balance of the debt, so, you know, interest would be allocated based off of the balance that that TIF is holding between the three, the different TIF funds that have the debt outstanding.
Okay, so perhaps I misunderstood the response earlier. This TIF 4 is getting allocation of that further drawdown?
Correct, so each TIF has its own, so we have a total line of credit of $10 million, each TIF fund has its balance that it has drawn down over time, and so it pays back and draws down again, but certainly, the $10 million is open to all three TIF districts, so some TIF districts have greater balances drawn down than others.
Okay, so 4, if 4 was further drawing down in '23, would that show up on page, should that show up on page 4-, sorry?
So that would show up on either page 5-13 or on page 5-14. That would show up as a revenue, as an other financing source for that fund. So this fund is not drawing down from the line of credit, it's just paying back, which is allowing other funds to draw down on the line of credit.
It still feels like the interest is, does it feel like the interest, then, is too high for this, if it's not further drawing down?
Are you referring to a particular line, City Treasurer?
90-01, on page 5-15.
All right, sorry, just one more second, I'm pulling up the balance here.
That's one of your J notes.
So, at the end of 2021, so what our current balance, the current balance TIF 4 has the largest balance of the line of credit. So right now, TIF 4 has drawn down $3 million of the line of credit, TIF 5 has drawn down $1.7 million, and TIF 6 has drawn down $2.15. So right now, that's why TIF 4 has, you know, a greater share, really and truthfully, of the interest and principal costs. So the drawdowns for 2023, you know, are going to be drawn down from the, mostly from the TIF 5 and TIF 6.
Shouldn't that show up, though, as, like, if you were recently drawing down on these, wouldn't it show up in other financing sources in, like, a recent year? Or an operating transfer in? Am I, is this able to just be a circle back?
Sure, I can give you a list of drawdowns and paybacks, yes.
Yeah, that's fine, and by the way, you know, I think a lot of people don't ask the questions you're asking and just think everyone knows, and they probably don't, so these are good questions to ask. All right, additional discussion on this one? All right, Director, if you want to go on to the TIF 5?
So TIF 5 is on page 5-21. So the notable expenses in this TIF, mostly recurring, the developer incentive on page 60-18 is major, the majority of the payments that come out of that is our signed grant program. The project listed in 80-15, the $335,000, that is the concrete, industrial concrete street improvement project that is slated for 2023, and then the facade renovation line item, 80-27, is the normal facade program that we have available to the businesses within the TIF.
Did you, on 80-04, did we use that $2 million?
We did not, no.
All right, discussion on TIF 5. All right. Continue.
TIF 6 is on page 5-27. So some of the notable items here, 80-23 continues the engineering for the metro station project. Line 80-25 is the utilities relocation project within the TIF. Item 80-26 is made up of three, three projects, the Schiller deck screening, which is $430,000, the York and Arthur intersection improvements, and then electric charging stations of $30,000. Other than that, the majority of the expenses are just reoccurring expenses for the TIF.
All right, so the Schiller deck screening, that's for the police department?
Correct.
All right, so is there any plan to move forward with that, or? City Manager?
Alderman Dunn asked that we pull that as a circle back with all the capital improvements that were requested for this building and the police station.
Very good, all right. Other discussion on TIF 6. Just a quick one, Mayor. Yes, Alderman Brennan. So I heard you reference $30,000 for chargers. Where is that?
That's part of the 80-26 other public improvements of $740,000, it's included there.
And is that in a specific garage, or what, how?
I don't think we have a specific plan on where they would go at this point. I think we're, we're looking at that, and then I think we're also hoping that we would be able to have some grants available to help that cost as well.
Perfect, thank you. The, on page 526, under grants, the federal grants and the other grants, are these monies, new monies we're getting, or are these carryovers? Because I didn't see it in prior years.
So the majority of those grants that you see in 2024 are related to the metro station project.
All right, so are these new ones, or are these ones where we've had commitments?
These are commitments that we already have, correct.
Anything else on the downtown TIF? All right. I think that takes us to, actually, do you have more in here?
So the next fund is the Debt Service Fund, which starts on 6-2. This fund accumulates the revenues and expenses related to payment of the general obligation debt for the debt funded by the city's governmental fund. So what would not be included in here would be any debt related to the Parking Fund or the MUF Fund. So as Alderman Toledo stated earlier, we are abating, or planning to abate, the debt property tax levy for 2022, which would fund the 2023 budget, so you will see that transfers in from other funds is funding the debt service. And then, on page 6-4, is the list of the interest and principal payments with the associated debt that we would be making payments on in 2023.
And I just don't know if all the Aldermen understand this, would you explain what the abatement is?
Sure. So, whenever you issue general obligation bonds, that's backed by the full faith and credit of the city, and what that means is that the city's property taxing authority really backs those, those bonds, and when you pass a bond ordinance that would be for general obligation bonds, the county would be directed to levy a tax for those debt service payments. So unless the city council would take action to direct the county, that we would have other revenues available, the county would levy that property tax for those bonds. So in order to tell the county to not levy those property tax debt service levies for those bonds, the city has to pass every year an abatement ordinance. What that abatement ordinance does is directs the county to not levy those dollars, so that property taxpayers are not directly paying for those debts through the property tax levy, they're being funded by other city revenues. So also, when you pass the abatement ordinance, you have to state that there are other revenues within the city or funds to make those payments.
We have, except for, right after, during the recession, when we couldn't abate for a while, I'm just wondering, since we always do, it seems to me, is that a sign of financial strength, or do other communities tend to abate as much and as often as we do?
I think it depends on the community, I think you'll see a mixture of both. I think it depends on how the community has determined that it wants to fund its debt service projects, so to the extent that the community might have determined that it wants to complete a project and use, you know, sales tax, or food and beverage tax, or whatever the revenue source may be, you would see maybe in those communities that they would abate more often, but it's also just as common to, to have a property tax levy for, for projects as well. It's really kind of a community-by-community determination.
Well, thank you. Other discussion? All right, then we will go on, I think that was J, we're on to K, 7-1.
So, in the Trust and Agency section, this really covers agency funds that the city holds, that the city does budget for. The first two budgets are the fire and police pension funds, so these are budgets that the city does put together. Ultimately, it is the fire and police pension boards that ultimately have the spending authority for those two funds, but the city does include them within the budget, so the main majority of the payments that are made out of those two budgets are the payments for pension payments.
So we see on page 73, there's some big changes between the budget of, like, interest income was budgeted 630, was 188, dividends, I mean, are these just a mixture of what the investments are?
So.
Or is this because we're now in a different investment area with?
Correct, so this is, the fire pension change on 7-3, you'll notice that the income was div, used to be divided into many different income and dividend buckets. So this year, the fire pension fund did transition its assets to the consolidated fund, and so now that change is now really shown as a change in the investment in the pension fund, it's shown as one line item as opposed to broken into many. And then you'll notice for the police pension fund, we have not yet transferred assets to the consolidated police pension fund, and that's why you'll see that their revenues are still broken out.
And is that one going through in 20, it's not going through in 2023, so it goes through the state?
So right now, that is in litigation, and the police pension fund is part of that suit.
All right.
And so that's why they have not transferred assets yet.
Okay, other questions? We'll go on, then.
All right, so moving on to 7-8 is the Gloss Mazillion Fund, these are funds that we hold, and just generally, we budget for some building and grounds expenses. In the past, really, three, you know, this year, in the past two years, we have not had expenses, but this is just something we put, put a budget in, in case those funds are needed.
Any questions, discussion? Go on to the working cash fund?
The working cash fund, this is a fund where there is a policy that the city will hold between $800,000 and $1 million in this working cash fund. At any point that the fund would exceed $1 million, that money is to be transferred back into the general fund, so you will see that we have just accumulated just over $1 million, and so the 2022 estimated, as well as any interest income that we would earn in 2023, will be transferred back to the general fund, to keep that balance at the $1 million.
It's good to see that stays healthy these last few years. Any questions on the working cash one? All right, anything else?
Do not, thank you.
City Manager, I ran out of things to talk about, do you have more?
Just to let the council know that we will do circle back items next week, and then we would propose to bring the budget to the December 5 city council meeting.
Very good. All right, we have no further business tonight. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, Second Alderman Deuter, all in favors, is Alderman Dunn on the line? No. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any oppose? We're adjourned, thank you.